It started, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, an automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a recognition and proclamation that I would like to do first, and so we're going to go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners first and do that, and then we'll recess and go back to the Board of Equalization. So roll call on the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Recognition and proclamation, there's a recognition of a county employee, Verdi Sporano, retiring from the Douglas County General Assistance after 28 years of service. Lee?
Mayor's County Board, Lee LeJure, Human Resources Director, Civil Service. Today, we have a resolution requesting the recognition of the Board for Ms. Verdi Sporano for her 28 years of service as she retires from the General Assistance Department of Douglas County. Ms. Deb Redding, the Director of the General Assistance Office, is here to present the recognition award, and members of her family are here. And Debbie will be saying a few words about Verdi's service to the county. First of all, I would like to now ask the County Board to approve the resolution, which reads as follows. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County, whereas the county wishes to recognize Ms. Verdi Sporano of the Douglas County Assistance Department on her retirement and her dedicated service of 28 years of Douglas County, Nebraska. Therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, the county recognizes Ms. Verdi Sporano for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof dated this 12th day of August, 2014.
Motion approved. Please vote. Your family is welcome to come up as well and stand with you so you can get together.
Motion passes.
Good morning. Deb Redding, General Assistance. Verdi, I'd like to present you with this resolution for your years of service with the county. I do want to thank you for your dedication to the department and the clients that we serve. Over the past 28 years, you've touched many clients' lives by treating them with dignity and compassion. Your presence in the department will definitely be missed by the staff and the clients, and I do hope you have a happy and healthy retirement, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Verdi, would you like to say something?
Last chance.
I would just like to say how grateful I am that I've been blessed to work for Douglas County. When I started with General Assistance 28 years ago, I started as the receptionist. I made $4.95 an hour. And our past Director, Jan Pelletier, saw my leadership abilities, and luckily, I was promoted to be a caseworker, a lead caseworker, Jan's administrative assistant, and then she asked me to become a supervisor. All I can say is that it has been a wild ride. I love what I do. I have always felt that I'm a client advocate, and if I taught anything or tried to get anything across to the people that I supervised, I would interview people that I was looking to hire, and I would tell them, but for the grace of God, you could be sitting on the other side of that desk. I've always loved what I do. It's a challenge. We do have people coming in yelling and screaming, but I think what, if we can remember that it's not personal, they're not yelling and screaming at us, and by the time they get to us, sometimes they're at wit's end. And oftentimes, someone just needs someone to listen. I would tell people, just listen, let them yell, but, you know, don't let them be abusive. Say, you know, "I'll listen to what you have to say if you could just sit down. Just sit down, and I'll listen." And I've always loved my work. Looking at the statistics now, I've talked to Deb about this, our census has gone down, but over half of our clients are 50 years old and over. And I think we put a lot into helping young people, get them going and getting them a job, but I would like to see more done for people 50 and over to try to work. I don't plan to get another paying job. I feel like I've been of service to God and to my community, but luckily, been paid well for it, and now I can retire with a nice pension. But one of my goals is to help in the grade schools. I would love to be a reading mentor to children in grade school. If I can sit with reading groups and, you know, even one little child to help them learn to read, I think that would be a valuable thing for me to do. So that is my goal, and I appreciate that. I never would have saved the money to allow me to be able to retire this young, because you always think you can't afford to. I think mandatory retirement is something that is needed, and I feel blessed by it. So if anybody grumbles, just give them my phone number. I'll be happy to talk to them. Thank you very much. It's been such a pleasure, and I'll keep in touch with Deb, and I told her if she ever needs help with guideline revisions or anything like that, I'd volunteer and, you know, be happy to help with anything like that, too. So thank you very much for your recognition. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Duda. Hold on one second, we have a couple of comments. Commissioner Duda.
Verdi, you have been, for so many people that come in contact with Douglas County, you have been the face of Douglas County. You represent us. And everything I've ever known about you has been great. I've never heard anything otherwise. But I also think you kind of represent a lot of county employees. We work with so many marginalized populations that we are responsible for, and that is so important. I mean, that is what the county does, and you have been where the rubber meets the road. You're the one making these things happen, and to be an advocate for the people you're representing is such a wonderful attitude. Thank you for all that you have done for us.
Thank you. I would like to say that my mother raised five of us by herself without child support, without being on public assistance. There were times when we would be, but she taught us work ethic, and she taught us never to forget where we came from.
Thanks.
So I'm the person today because of my mom.
What a nice tribute.
Well, Verdi, you've owned up to that all the years that I've known you. You have been an asset to the county. You will be missed, but as I'm listening to you, you'll be around. We might find something for you to do.
Sure.
So, but go and enjoy. You know, so many people retire, and they don't take advantage of that, and go enjoy your family. Do what you truly love to do with them and be with them, because you never know what tomorrow's going to be.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy. Enjoy.
What'd you say? Did he hear?
No, he didn't. He did a little bit.
She's been around long enough to watch a few things.
That was cute.
All right. Could I get a motion to recess the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Douglas County Board of Equalization? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 12, 2014, and call for a meeting set Tuesday, August 26, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment of corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Motion approved. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a resolution. There's a resolution approving the acceptance of a late homestead exemption application filed between July 1, 2014, and July 21, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a resolution. There's a resolution approving the acceptance of a late homestead exemption application filed between July 1, 2014, and July 21, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next, there are three protests for a special valuation of green belt disqualification on parcels 25847 Blondo Street in Waterloo, 13506 North River Drive, and 13506 River Drive. Do you want to just talk about all of them, or?
Sure. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. Going from top to bottom, the first of these out in Waterloo is residential property out on a lake in Curtis Acres. Actually, much of that lot is in the lake, and so it seems to us pretty clearly to be a residential slash recreational property rather than one that's primarily used for agriculture, which is what the law requires. The taxpayer has a lease for a dollar a year with the local farmer to take a little hay off a couple of acres, and we just don't think that meets primary use for agricultural purposes. The other two are repeaters. They are wooded parcels north of town. They have never, Mr. Weber, the applicant, has never maintained, the parcels qualify on their own. He hasn't pointed to any agricultural activity. He's not in any kind of a program to take land out of production. The land doesn't meet the definition of agricultural land, and so we denied it on that basis.
Okay, and that's for actually FNG?
What's that?
The last one.
The last, that's the last two. FNG, yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'm a little puzzled by all this, because I remember several years ago, and I'm not going to mention names, but people who were very recognizable had homes of, I think they were on lots of 10 acres, actually in a subdivision. And originally, I made a motion on one of them to deny the green belt, and that passed after heated discussion. And then later in the meeting, after we had gone through all these green belts, that one was brought up, as were others, and the County Board reversed itself. And I've never heard, maybe it's been a while, but I never heard the phrase "primary use." We don't expect these to be farms. I thought green belt was, in my estimation, green belt is a property that's adjacent to, say, you know, say the West Roads. I mean, the home that's on the east side of the West Roads maybe could qualify for green belt.
If I may, although the green belt statute has gone through a lot of renovation or a lot of changes over the years, it is essentially aimed at providing an agricultural preference for agricultural property whose value in the open marketplace may be influenced by other non-agricultural factors. So, for example, here in Douglas County, agricultural land, if it's sold in the open market, the price it would fetch between those willing buyers and willing sellers, the market value of it would probably be considerably higher than it might for agricultural purposes. Out in the western part of the state, you have land along the rivers that's not really very good agricultural land, but people will pay a lot of money for the ability to hunt on it. And so essentially, what the legislature is saying is if this land is primarily used for agriculture, we will provide a valuation preference. And it's right there, primarily used for agricultural purposes is right there in the definition of agricultural or horticultural land in 771359.
But what's the classification for property? I remember a nursery somewhere in Douglas County, elderly couple owned it. It was not really in the best of, not the highest state of operation, but it was nonetheless a nursery adjacent to a housing subdivision, and they came in and asked for green belt and got it.
Well, without having that one in front of me, knowing the particulars, my suspicion is if they were being operated as a nursery, they are actually selling trees, or selling plants, or selling agricultural products, yes, that meets the definition of agricultural or horticultural land.
Well, you denied it. Your office denied it.
How long ago was it?
Eight years ago.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying, we had a whole slew of denials come in here. We had farmers show up that had, I mean, obviously weren't.
There was, for that year at least, there was a variant in the statute that said you would analyze the parcel as a whole, including taking a look at the improvements on it as well. That was in play for about a year, and then the legislature changed it back. And I think some of those we recommended would have fit the description that you're talking about. If somebody has, you know, a six-acre parcel of ground with a million-dollar house on it, and they sell a little bit of hay on it, okay?
They got green belt.
Well, I know, but that's probably why we recommended denials in that instance, under that version of the statute. Subsequently, now the law has been changed back, and so you look at the use of the land.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, rather than drag this out, I'd like to see a list of all the properties in Douglas County with green belt, because if there ever was a mess, that was it, because that thing bounced back and forth, and I think there are, maybe there's still people getting green belt that live in these subdivisions, because they have their front yard in supposedly in hay and aren't paying taxes on it, or whatever they're paying. So I'd like to see all the lists you have of green belt, and maybe what we'll have to do is revisit that whole nightmare and apply the new statute, and I think if we do, we'll be taking away a lot of green belt. These people, in my book, qualify for green belt from what we've done in the past. Excuse me. They have a lease agreement with someone. I don't care if it's only for a buck, but they have a lease, and someone's actively farming it, taking the product off and using it. It's hay or alfalfa or something. I'll defer to Mr. Duda, Commissioner Duda, for proper description. But it's also including wasteland, which you talked about apparently is the part that may be underwater, I'm not sure. But I'm not convinced this operator, and I'm somewhat familiar with the area, if it's where I think it is, it's awfully nice housing, really nice housing. But that doesn't mean they are not qualified to get an exemption. So I would make a motion on item E, based on the information that we have in front of us. I would make a motion that we grant the green belt as requested by the taxpayer. And hearing no second, I'll ask for a list of all the green belts we have. I want to see who's getting them, and we'll have to revisit the whole thing.
I will second your motion.
Okay, thank you.
There is also on the other two, a request for those to be laid over as the representative for those properties had a conflict, so we could lay those over till next week. So on item E, there's a motion to approve the green belt, right?
Yes. And if I could speak to it just for a moment, I think, and when I was talking to Mr. Goodwilly, some of my thoughts were coming out, but we have property in Douglas County that is actually homes in subdivisions, and.
They can't qualify if they're on subdivision by law.
Okay, well, I don't want to name who they were, but some of them are awfully well-known people, and they had 10-acre plots, and some of their neighbors, I mean, it was really, to me, it was quite bizarre, and I'll look at them, maybe my memory's failing me, but it was residential, but they did have their front yard in hay, and we gave them green belt. And I think to be consistent, and I'm not sure this is their front yard, but it's, looks to me like it qualifies. If we gave it to someone else, then I think we should do the same thing for this taxpayer. So I appreciate the second, and we'll see how it goes.
Are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Duda?
Yes, thank you. You are somewhat correct, Commissioner Boyle. Land in a subdivision, and once it's been subdivided, it no longer can qualify for green belt by law. But the legislature did task every county board with making the determination of what qualifies as farmland in their county, and at some point, we do need to exercise a certain level of judgment, of discretion, of what does qualify. And really, it somewhat is up to us whether or not a million-dollar home with 10 acres of hay, whether that 10 acres of hay qualifies or not. We should try to be consistent. We do need to exercise some level of judgment. A couple of these make no pretense to even be doing any farming, and I think it is important for the Board to show some level of judgment on those, but we won't be acting on them today.
I do have a question on this one. Mike, on the sheet that I'm assuming was filled out by the owner, it says, when the five acres of untaxed wasteland is included with the leased portion, 80% of that is used for agriculture. Now, does that mean that you guys are denying that that's happening, or?
Well, no, the portion of the parcel that's in the water isn't getting taxed. Okay, so what we're really just talking about is the terra firma, if you will, okay? And so he's got it kind of backwards. I mean, with wasteland, wasteland can get egg treatment if it's lying in or adjacent to other agricultural property. I mean, he's got the tail kind of wagging the dog the way he's articulating that. The real question here is, does the land itself qualify as primarily agricultural, and we do not believe it does.
And is this the whole thing, or just the portion of it where?
It would be the portion of it that is not associated with buildings. By law, the land under the house or any other kind of improvements or outbuildings does not qualify.
So, okay, so basically, on this other, there's three acres that they have, that they're growing hay, that they lease, they lease those three acres.
For a dollar a year.
For a dollar a year. So that's the only portion that's not taxed, or that is in green belt?
That's, yes, that they're asking for.
That they're asking for. And I guess I'm trying to still, by what the law says today, why does your office feel it doesn't qualify?
We just don't think the primary use of it is for agriculture. It essentially is the guy's front yard.
Commissioner Duda?
I'm sorry, I don't, it's leftover land.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to say that it may be in the front yard, and I'll word it, but we've done this. This is our standard. If you have long grass.
Well, if you want to continue to do it incorrectly, I guess you can.
Well, I'm not sure that it's incorrect. I mean, I personally think that it is. I mean, I voted the other way all those other times, but it didn't work out that way. So, I mean, if we're going to have a standard, it becomes, it's not really my way, you know, voting incorrectly. It's what, this is the standard of the County Board in our judgment. We said this qualifies as green belt.
Well, then Commissioner, vote as you wish. We don't believe this property qualifies.
I'm sorry?
I said, then Commissioner, you folks are free to vote any way you wish, but we do not believe this property qualifies.
I understand. And I, you know, I mean, as I've said many times, I think the assessors in charge of evaluations on everything. I wish we didn't even have the Board of Equalization. I just don't see, if people appeal to us for, over a judgment you've made, and we can't say we don't agree, then it's not personal, it's just that, that's just the way things are. And this is consistent with what we've done in the past.
And I guess to piggyback on that, that's the only thing I'm having a problem with, is that if we start piecing, last time, we kind of had a big group of them, and then another big group, and then another big group, so that there was more, and I think that's why we overturned what we did originally, because we started to change our minds on some of those partway through. And so is there a way that, or is there a timeframe different for all these parcels where we could take the green belt and maybe have, I would like to really have a day where we sit down as a board and have you present these?
Special valuation is really kind of a funny proposition, because statutorily, the law says that once in special valuation, you're in it until you become disqualified, and there are several disqualifying events. One is a use change, and the other is if you're annexed into an incorporated township, city, or village. So once in, you're in unless something has changed in one of those two directions.
And so what triggered this being brought?
This was a new application.
Oh, a new application.
I think they had.
So it's never had green belt before?
It may have way in the past, but then it dropped out, and then it's reapplied.
Yes, it's history, that's correct. It's been a couple years ago.
Oh, I see. And was it the same portion?
It may have been, I do not know.
Commissioner Kraft?
If what Mr. Duda, our Commissioner Duda says is correct about each county has the discretion of setting its own policies, and I do believe it's correct, because, you know, he's only wrong every other time.
Pick on him, pick on him.
Perhaps we should, as a board, set up the guidelines, whether it's three acres or 10 acres, whether it's an income level, but I think we should, at this board, have an open discussion, inviting the public, for a public hearing, and set the policy. Now, in relation to, it's been our history in the past, each board stands on its own, because I wasn't here when you were doing that eight years ago, nor was Pam, or PJ. So we now have a different board with perhaps a different philosophy. So I don't feel, in this instance, you know, it looks to me like he's charging a dollar a year so he can save a few thousand on taxes. Not a bad trade-off, but I don't think it's trying to find a way to circumvent the law or the taxation is proper. So I will not support this as green belt. I'll vote against denying that status.
Any other questions or comment? Commissioner Boyle?
The only thing I would say to that, I understand what you're saying, and I'm just saying that the policy that this taxpayer is requesting is consistent with what we've done. And so, and I believe in that, this instance, we need to be treating taxpayers equally, fairly. If this had appealed and appeared in the agenda eight years ago, it would have gone sailing through. And today, it's here and sticks out like a sore thumb, and it's getting beat to death. And I think in fairness to this taxpayer, and in the interest of consistency, he should be granted the exemption.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I agree with both of you. I think this is consistent with.
Lost his coffee.
Sorry, miss it. You are right, Commissioner Boyle, that this would be, I think, consistent with actions we have taken historically, and as a Board of Equalization, we should strive for some level of consistency. But I also think Commissioner Kraft is right, that we're due for a review of all of these, and it will really be a tough can of worms to try to develop this policy of what we consider to be farming in Douglas County, but I think at some point, it is important that we do so.
Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to say, going along with what Mark said, and also Claire following up, it seems to me, and I know we're going to have a new assessor next year, that it'd be good for the assessor's office to talk with us and then develop the plan and review some of these that are inconsistent with what you've talked about. You know, if you're doing something in your front yard, let's get it off of this green belt kind of waiver of taxes. And I think that's what we'd like to see, Mr. Goodwilly. Are those ones where there wasn't a consistency? Have they been reviewed? I mean, like Mark said, we weren't here eight years ago.
Well, as I mentioned, statutorily, once, you know, once the board has approved green belt, there are really only a limited number of ways for that property to become disqualified.
Really?
Yes.
So if we approve green belt, and I'm. So if we approve green belt, and I'm doing this farming, and then I am not doing it, it's still pretty tough to get it off?
Two ways to disqualify. One is if the property gets annexed by an incorporated town, city, or village.
Okay.
Okay? And the other is if the use change changes. So if you're farming in rural Douglas County, and you decide, to heck with this, I'd really rather farm condominiums than corn, and you roll the bulldozers in and you change the use, then you would lose your special valuation status.
Otherwise, you can't look at it again and realize, hey, they're just doing a small portion, a little garden or something, and you can't really take it away?
The statute really does talk about the only ways to disqualify.
Wow.
Commissioner Kraft?
So if we set a firm policy, that'll have no change upon those who were given green belt status when the law was different, because it's somewhat like zoning laws you grandfathered in?
A little bit like that, yeah.
So what we would do would affect future, but not anything past?
Well, for the most part, unless something happens with those parcels and the use changes in some fashion.
Right. Okay. Yeah. But I do think we need to take action and set a firm policy.
So the reason that we looked at them the last time, what triggered it, was the change in the law?
Yes.
So anything that we do to say, we want to set it being, you know, the three acres or whatever, the five acres, that doesn't trigger the change? It is the law that triggers the change?
Right. The latter.
The latter. Well, and that's where I'm struggling with this, is because the way the law is, and what we've acted upon in the past, this one, I agree with Commissioner Boyle, would qualify. But they're so, the green belt is so specialized, that that's why I would really like somehow, but if the law doesn't allow us, to take a look at them again as a whole, and decide, then how does, how do you know that something changed, without actually going? I mean, I suppose somebody could come in and admit it openly, but?
That doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes you might have a plat done, so somebody can subdivide, and then you start to ask questions about what's the use of the property. Or when the property changes hands, we always try and find out from the new owner what's going to be happening with that property. Obviously, we get annexation information from the annexing body, what property they're going to annex. So we do, you know, we do try and follow up when we get information about a particular parcel.
So if the board said, we would like, how many parcels do you think there are that are in green belt?
I don't know. I don't have a number.
Just say there's 100. Just say. And so, we say we want a day to sit down and look at all of these as a whole. Would we have the ability to, well, then we would know if something changed, because you all would have to go out and look, right?
Yeah, that's likely.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, you know, what I would rather do than have the county board, the Board of Equalization, look at the policies of the assessor, I'd like to respectfully suggest that this is the assessor's job, that the assessor should look at what's labeled green belt, and tell us what policies qualify, or, excuse me, which properties qualify, which ones don't. I mean, it's tedious, but I don't think it's our job to do that. I think on an appeal it is.
But he just did, that's where we're at odds, because he just did that. As the assessor, they came up and said, this doesn't qualify, and we're saying, well, from what we did in the past, it does, so?
Well, I'm suggesting looking at all the other properties, the 100 or so, and then having, instead of having the Board of Equalization look at it, you know, and I think the better thing is for the assessor to look at it, because that's where all this springs from. So if the assessor says, our policy that from the state in years past, the laws changed, and this is what it should be now, then we understand what it is. But I don't think we should be the driving force in making the policy, because I don't think that's our job.
But ultimately, and Theresa, you may have to help here a little bit, ultimately, because the way the law is, this is the process. And basically, what you're saying is that their policy right now is saying, this one doesn't qualify, and then, but they have to bring it to the county board, right? Or the Board of Equalization, not the county board. They bring it to the county, the Board of Equalization for affirmation or whatever?
The, Theresa York, Douglas County Attorney's Office, the assessor's office would bring the value, whether it qualified as ag land, to the Board of Equalization for its vote of approval or denial. And I would like to offer a little additional information to the board, if I may. The statute has been amended three times since 2006, was amended in 2006, 2008, and 2012. So there have been some changes over the course of the last eight years that would affect this board's attempt to be consistent. It would have to always be, rather than consistent with the board's past decisions, it should be consistent with the law as it exists at the time the board is making determinations.
So maybe we need to look at that before we determine these. I mean, we're laying over the other two, maybe we lay over this one until we make sure that we are conforming to what the law. Uh-oh, they're bringing in the big guns.
They're coming with big guns.
The cavalry's here.
Roger Morrissey, Douglas County Assessor.
Good morning, Roger.
Morning.
1,600 green belt applications, every year. We've reviewed them. We physically drive by them to make sure on the use. We get denied money for staff.
Yeah.
Goodwilly gets beat up every week.
That's part of, we don't mean to.
It's your decision. We recommend to you, based off of what we know and what we see. Curtis Acres is a recreational area. It's your decision what to do. To take hypotheticals, Commissioner Boyle, I want the addresses of the ones you're talking about, and we will revisit those, to make sure that you're consistent. State law directs what we do, and we make that recommendation to you.
Right.
The final decision's yours, and we'll live by that decision, whatever that is.
Well, before we go on, first of all, Roger, nobody's beating up on Mike. We're just asking questions about these.
I am.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not either.
I don't look at it that way. You're bringing something to this board, and we may disagree, but we're just having a conversation. So I don't think anybody's attacking or trying to beat up on him. Mike, I think, has always done a very well and very professional presentation of his issues, and so whether we agree or disagree, that's beside the point. But I certainly don't think we're beating up on anybody to take a look at these. So if there's 1,600 applications that you've all looked at and driven by them, regardless of whether or not we've given you the right amount of money you want, it's been done, and now you're going to be bringing all of these forward for recommendations now?
No, no. We, it's an ongoing thing that we do to take a look, and when we're valuing properties or an area, we're going to look at those, we're going to look at those properties. It's not something that we have the staff to do every year.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, and I would agree with that. I mind jokingly said it, but Mike presents a really good case, and he makes a good argument. And it's, this is something that we did, not something you did. We're the ones who overturned your decision that gave those people, you know, so I'm not, that happened. So that's not something you did, it's something we did, it's our judgment, and I didn't agree with it.
Yeah, and we've disagreed with some decisions, and.
Right. And I don't necessarily, honestly, I personally, don't agree with this, the one that's before us. But if we're going to be fair, people in other parts of the county were treated just the way he's asking. And so how can he be singled out just because he, something happened, and he's before us? I don't think that's fair. And the other thing is that I think if the law has changed, and it has, three times, then I can't imagine why people who have green belt and got decisions from us in the past, wouldn't have their status changed, if that's what the law requires. I mean, this is an ongoing thing. Green belt isn't forever. I mean, it is in a sense, but it's not forever. If the law says you have to do certain things to get green belt, then that applies to these properties, and they should be applied. And that's what I think the assessor wants to do. And we haven't staffed it adequately, but that's what he should be able to do. And that's why I say it's the assessor's job to come in and tell us what these valuations should be based on current law. And I don't think anybody's grandfathered in, any of the, you know, and I pass some names around to you, I don't think those folks are grandfathered in. I think those should be changed, if they are warranted, under the new law. That's all I'm saying. I want to be fair, I want to be consistent, I want to get every tax dollar we're entitled to. I think everybody wants to pay their fair share of taxes, and that's where I'm headed. And that's the reason I brought this up.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and I was going to say this before you came, you said it also. Part of our charge as a county board, according to the manuals I read from the Nebraska Association of County Officials, is to set policy. We are the policy setters, and it is our job, and if we want to pass it off, we probably could, but I don't think we should. Being fair, you know, you, in, one day you commit a crime, and the next day, they've no longer called it a crime, or they've increased the penalties, not everything is fair. You have to look at it at the time, the legislation that is in place at that time. And I'm not trying to relate crime to green belt.
Yes, you do. They're criminals.
But, you know, we have to look at it and make our judgment, and every time we come to the Board of Eek on green belt, we're setting policy for that one parcel. Let's make it consistent, as you say.
Right.
And is there a time factor on acting on this? Anybody?
Yeah, I think, actually, I think there is. I want to say the board has to act within 30 days of receiving the protest.
And when did we receive this protest?
Does the protest come to? I think it started with.
It dated the 30th of July.
With administration, so.
Oh, April.
I bet July 30th.
We received this protest on August 4th, in our office.
August 4th?
Okay, August 4th, okay.
Geez. Well, the least of them was August 5th. Excuse me, October.
Okay. So we can lay it over, we're not in trouble. I'd like to, yes.
We have a motion, a second, though, right now.
Right, but I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we lay this over with the other one.
With the other two?
With the other two, yes.
Is there a?
How long do we want to lay it over, guys?
Well, we've got a 30-day window here, at least, on this one.
Yeah, it's got to be before September 4th. And I don't have my.
Commissioners, you have, I believe you have one week to do it, so it has to be, I believe it has to be.
Lay it over for one week, then.
What are we going to do during that week?
I'm going to look at the legislation.
We're in trouble.
August 5th? Oh, because September, wow.
But what, seriously, what are we going to do? We're going to lay it over, and so what? I mean, I think the same problems there. I mean, I don't mind, I'm not trying to rush it, but I don't see that we're going to do anything during that week.
I think that that goes back to the bigger issue, though, is if we grant this one, or even all of these, on the premise of what we've done in the past, because nothing's changed, then the question becomes, if we do take a look at all of them as collectively at a whole, and come up with the policy changes that we want to apply to green belt now, then we have a longer period of time to look at it, right? There's no time limit on looking at these as a whole, as there is on this one, that was brought up as a separate application?
Theresa York, County Attorney's Office, the board could take additional time to review policy with regards to going forward. I think with regards to changing any status of a parcel that's been granted green belt, you would need some event, like change of use or annexation, you'd need a reason in compliance with the statute in order to convert it from green belt to non-green belt. But you can take the time you need to look at any policy going forward.
But if the law has changed, is that what triggered you guys to look at it, is the change in the law? All these 1,600 that you've looked at?
No, they apply when the owner decides they want to have green belt. And when they apply, we apply the existing statutes and regulations when they apply. We do the review that Roger had mentioned, and we make a determination about whether we believe the property is being primarily used for agricultural purposes. So the 1,600 could have come in, you know, I mean, there might have been some last year, some the year before, some going back quite a little while.
Oh, okay. All right. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I know this is, let me drag this out, but I would recommend that, we can't do anything in a week, we're not going to be able to set policy, or whatever it is people think we should do. I think what we should do to be consistent and fair with this taxpayer is treat him just like we've treated other people in similar situations, and that is grant him the green belt. This is one application. And then, if we find that this policy is incorrect, whatever it is, then all of those other people, including him, are, I think, are under the new guidelines, under the guidelines that somebody develops. I think it should be the assessor, but some people think it should be us. But I don't think we should let him hang out there, and not have the benefit of how his neighbors, not literal, but his neighbors are being treated.
Commissioner Morgan?
Okay, I don't think there was a second to.
Yes, sir, I did.
Commissioner Kraft's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right.
Okay. I plan to support the assessor, his recommendation. I wasn't here when we're talking about the consistency. I think we have to start to do what the assessor believes is right. You've been hired to make those assessments, inspect the properties, look at things, and that's where I'm going with this. So as far as I'm concerned, I'd call for the question.
Commissioner Duda?
Well, in terms of consistency, I agree, we should try to be consistent. I would love if we had a bright line that says, this is farm ground, this isn't. Having the taxpayers submit a Schedule F and say, you've got to have a minimum of $1,000 of farm income, or whatever the bright line is, it would sure make life a whole lot easier for everybody if they knew clearly what constitutes farm ground and what doesn't in Douglas County. But I would say these three, and I know we're not even considering the other two, the other two have been turned down historically. That ground has never been granted green belt, and they make no pretense to do any farming on it. And so, I'm not sure that we can treat all three of these identically. I don't think they have similar circumstances. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'm not asking all three to be treated similarly, but the other thing is that there are, I remember in the past, that when, we haven't had any green belts brought before us for a long time, but I remember in the past, we looked at the Internal Revenue Service for claims, how they filed taxes, whether it was ag land, so forth. So there are other standards to substantiate, you know, whether or not this really qualifies as green belt. But I think in fairness to them, like I said before, we ought to treat them, we ought to treat them like we did the other taxpayers. That's just how I feel. So, and the question was called, so I'm ready to vote.
Well, and before we do the vote, I would like us to pursue having a task force put together to look at the policy, because I agree with Commissioner Kraft, that while the assessor looks at stuff, we are a policy-making board, and we are the Board of Equalization, so we should at least be in conversation about what that policy should be. So if I could just appoint a couple people to look at what we would like the policies to be, at least that will trigger the discussion from there forward. So if anyone's interested, let me know, but.
I'd like to be on it.
Okay.
And I would request that somebody from the County Attorney's Office be on it to help.
So we'll put that together. There's no time, like next week or whatever, but we'll have it together by next week, and then you can start doing the work. Okay? And so the motion is to grant the parcel at 25847 Blondo, Waterloo, Nebraska, green belt. Please vote.
Do you have a substitute motion to lay over?
I had it.
There was no second.
No second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
No.
Now, can, would the maker of that motion include the layover of items? Oh. Now, can, would the maker of that motion include the layover of items F and G?
Yes.
However.
Well, that's kind of conflicting.
The second, you're kind of-
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Just the one one, okay.
All right.
So now I need a motion to lay over F and G?
Well, no, wait, the motion failed.
Oh, it failed, I'm sorry.
So what I'd like to make a motion is- We support the assessor and go with his recommendation to deny the green belt.
I will second that. Please vote.
Just a moment, please.
Just like I-
Right. Sorry.
One moment, please.
Madam Chair, there's one comment that was made that has really, really caught my ear. And it was that once green belt is granted, it is in until disqualified. Now, isn't it interesting we don't treat old ladies that way? Old ladies and homestead exemptions.
Why just old ladies?
People with dementia.
Why are you picking on old ladies?
Because they're the ones who file for old men, too. They're the people who file for homestead exemptions.
I know, I know.
They're fighting dementia a lot of times. They've got a lot of things going on. I mean, I'll tell you the truth.
I agree.
I'll tell you the truth, I just sent an email to someone I had a credit coming from on a purchase I made, and they said, we already sent that to you. I didn't know that, I forgot. I mean, I'm, you know, 70. And so anyhow, you know, to file for, I don't get homestead exemption, but anyway, I think that, you know, if we can apply that to people who are asking for exemptions for green belt, surely we could duplicate that language in our legislative plan to ask that to apply to people with homestead exemptions.
I know we've talked about that as a legislative item.
We really need it.
So we can ask Marcos to look at that language and bring it forth as to whether we want to introduce that for next session?
Thank you. And the other thing I'd like to ask is that someone, maybe Patrick or one of our legal persons, do a summary, or else we ask the county clerk to do a transcription of this discussion for the newly nominated and possible registered deeds county assessor, Diane Bodyado, so she's up to speed on these issues. Would someone do that?
Commissioners, we'll get a transcript from the clerk's office. That'd be the most complete.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we need a motion to lay over items F and G for one week.
So move.
Second. Now, just a minute, let's see. Did you say F and G?
F and G, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask why we're doing one week?
That was the request of the person.
Because they had a conflict in being here.
Okay, oh, I see, thank you.
Okay. Now we need a motion for item H, application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. And adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. We will now move back into the agenda of the Dallas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 12, 2014. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, August 19, 2014.
Motion for AMB?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Madam Chairman, I abstained because we manage a property where there was a check issued by the county.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda, items A through I, for a total of nine items.
I'd like to poll item E, please.
Okay.
Move for the approval of the consent agenda, plus item-
Second.
Please vote.
I'm sorry, is that B or D?
E is in Edward.
E. Okay, thank you. Okay. Motion passes.
Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanted you to give a speech about why you should be appointed to this. No, I, I'm just trying to give you a little hard time.
Now, you said you were going to offer a substitute motion.
I forgot, I was going to offer a substitute motion.
For you to be appointed?
No, good lord, no. Now, I move approval of E. I shouldn't have done that. I shouldn't waste the county's time, but it was too much fun to give you a little hard time.
Second.
Please vote.
At least you have a consistency.
Yes.
Wasting time. To always give everyone a hard time.
Please vote.
That, too.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a public hearing. There's a Class 1 licensed beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale for Preister, Sherry, and Jeremy DBA Cuppy Cakes at 14242 Ford Street, number 109. Hi, could you state your name and your address and who you're with?
Yeah, I'm Sherry Preister with Cuppy Cakes. My store address is 14242 Ford Street, Suite 109. I have what you need.
Okay, you can hand those to the, is that the notification?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. This is the public hearing, and we do have, I did have notification, that we didn't have the notification list, so we have the notification list now.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, and so is there anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'm curious, is this that L-shaped shopping center, you know, we had neighbors in about a bar that was going in a corner? Is that the wrong location?
Yes, it's the same loca, it's the same location within it, yes.
Okay, and where is yours located? Are you on the north, in the north building?
I am, there's Aquatops right next to us.
Who's next door?
Aquatops, and then there's us, and then there's like a karate studio, and then a hair studio, and then that Billy O's that's opening up, and then, what's the other one? Physical therapist.
Okay, and are you on the building that runs north and south, or east and west?
Oh, my gosh, now this was when my husband would say, this is why you need to know your directions. We would be going east and west.
Okay, we're getting an east and, east and west.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that, does that put you in the very, very far corner toward the homes that are up on the hill?
Um, no, I'm not, I mean, I'm two stalls away from that, yes, correct.
Okay, and didn't we have an application for a bar there again?
That was on the other side.
It was?
Closer to-
Closer to 144th Street.
Okay, so how many liquor licenses are there in that shopping center?
I think, right now, there's only two. Billy O's that got approved, and then Pizzeria Diablo. Basically, we just want to be able to put liqueurs in our coffees and-
Oh, liqueurs, okay.
Yeah. We're not going to be some big bar that's open till late. We're going to keep our hours till nine. We just want to be able to do that and maybe have ladies have wine with their cupcakes and desserts.
Okay.
I would move for, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to, did you want to say something?
I was just going to move for, make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Does anybody else want to make any comments-
Thank you.
-during the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing.
And now?
And I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And there's been a second? Please vote.
Ladies to have wine?
I think she said put them in the cupcakes, didn't she?
Yeah, that sounds really good.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Next is the committees, the first being the finance, Commissioner Morgan and Duda.
As presented.
All right.
Joe, you don't have anything.
Good.
Anyone else have anything on their committees? Otherwise, we'll move to human resources. There's a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Anyone have any questions or comments? Item two, weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
Nothing to report.
Have we had some assaults?
Then item three, legislative issues. And again, Marcos, if you could just look up the language that is used in green belt, to see if we can come up with language that could apply to homestead exemptions and bring that forward for us when we do our legislative stuff. There is a administrative, we have a need for an executive session, but there is an administrative services committee meeting that is following this county board meeting in room 903, and then we have a human resources committee meeting at 1 o'clock in room 903. And so with that, we do have executive session for-
Litigation, personnel, security.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Personnel, litigation, and security.
We got lots of stuff.
Commissioner Boyle?
That last longer than our meeting?
Do we have a motion to reconvene in a current?
Uh huh.
Chris, are you a yes? Sorry, Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes.